Tires hung low on a gravel lane. Wind rolls free through a windowpane. Left the noise and the 9 to 5. Now I'm driving just to feel alive. Fields stretch wide like an open hand. Peace don't live in a crowded land. Sun on my dash and boots on the floor. Chasing quiet and nothing more. Back roads and blue skies. Where my heart finally flies. No more rushing, no more wise. Just a song and clear sunrise. Life slows down when you let it ride. Back roads and blue skies. Old farm stands selling peaches and pie. Kids laughing loud as they run by. Strangers wave like we've always met. That's the kind of joy you don't forget. Maybe someday I'll settle down. Build a porch on the edge of town town. But till then I'll keep rolling slow. With the breeze and the radio. Back roads and blue skies. Where my dreams don't pass me by. I've got time and peace inside. Let the wheels and stars align. No map needed, just feeling right. Wake up slow with the coffee brew. Sun creeping in through the screen door ruin. Boots on the porch and the dog still sleeping. Another good day in a life worth keeping. Sun comes up slow but it always shines. Even on days when you're feeling behind. Take a deep breath, let the worries roll on. You're stronger than you know. Right where you belong. Old truck rattles down a gravel lane. Radio humming, a sweet refrain. Fields are green and skies are blue. Just like the dreams you're chasing too. Sun comes up slow but it always shines. Even on days when you're feeling behind. Take a deep breath, let the worries roll on. You're stronger than you know. Right where you belong. There's hope in the wind and peace in the pine. No matter how far, you're never out of time. So take the reins and ride that road. Love in your heart and a light in low. Cause the sun comes up and the pain moves on. Early light breaks the haze. Boots on for another day. Cane pole and a tackle line. Down the trail where the pine trees shine. I ain't rich, I don't mind. Got the wind and the sweet sunshine. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Old dog trails closed behind. Laughing kids tossing stones in time. Granddad's voice still in the breeze. Saying, "Son, life's meant to be easy." Don't chase gold or fortune's flame. Find your joy in the gentle rain. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Sometimes quiet says it best. And your heart just needs to rest. Where the river knows my name. Let the world fade away. I'll be here with open skies thanking life for the small delights. One soft breeze, one prayer of grace. Feeling love in this wide open space. The sun is low as the sky turns gold. I'm on the road with a heart that's bold. The world moves slow but the time feels right. With the stars ahead and the moon tonight. I'm on a winding road to where I belong. The breeze is soft and the day feels long. Every step I take brings me closer to home. I'm where I'm meant to be on this road I've known. Dusty trails where the wildflowers grow. The peaceful sound of rivers flow. The whispers of trees in the evening breeze. Everything I need is right here with me. I'm on a winding road to where I belong. The breeze is soft and the day feels long. Every step I take brings me closer to home. I'm where I'm meant to be on this road I've known. No hurry now, no need to race. Just take it slow in this peaceful place. With every mile, my soul feels free. The journey's long but it's meant to be. I'm on a winding road to where I belong. The breeze is soft and the day feels long. Every step I take brings me closer to home. I'm where I'm meant to be on this road I've known. So I'll keep on moving with the stars above. On this winding road to the land I love. Home is closer now and my heart is full. On this road I've known, it's where I feel home. Wake up to the rooster's crow. Coffee brewing, sun hanging low. Bare feet on the old wood floor. A brand new day waiting at the door. One step at a time we go. Through the highs and the lows we know. Life rolls on like a sweet old rhyme. We're doing just fine, one step at a time. Fields wide with the morning breeze. Troubles fade like autumn leaves. Working hands and a grateful heart. It ain't fancy but it's a start. One step at a time we go. Through the highs and the lows we know. Life rolls on like a sweet old rhyme. We're doing just fine, one step at a time. There's gold in the setting sun. And peace when the work is done. Keep on moving, no need to rush. The good Lord made us strong enough. One step at a time we go. With a smile and a heart that glows. Love is near in the simplest signs. Early light breaks the haze. Boots on for another day. Cane pole and a tackle line. Down the trail where the pine trees shine. I ain't rich, I don't mind. Got the wind and the sweet sunshine. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song. Telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Old dog trails closed behind. Laughing kids tossing stones in time. Granddad's voice still in the breeze. Saying, "Son, life's meant to be easy." Don't chase gold or fortune's flame. Find your joy in the gentle rain. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song. Telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Sometimes quiet says it best. And your heart just needs to rest. Where the river knows my name. Let the world fade away. I'll be here with open skies. Thanking life for the small delights. One soft breeze, one prayer of grace. Feeling love in this wide open space. Early light breaks the haze. Boots on for another day. Cane pole and a tackle line. Down the trail where the pine trees shine. I ain't rich, I don't mind. Got the wind and the sweet sunshine. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song. Telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Old dog trails closed behind. Laughing kids tossing stones in time. Granddad's voice still in the breeze. Saying, "Son, life's meant to be easy." Don't chase gold or fortune's flame. Find your joy in the gentle rain. Where the river knows my name. Washing worries down the drain. Every ripple sings my song. Telling me I'm where I belong. Take it slow, no need to race. Peace is found in a simple place. Where the river knows my name. Sometimes quiet says it best. And your heart just needs to rest. Where the river knows my name. Let the world fade away. I'll be here with open skies. Thanking life for the small delights. One soft breeze, one prayer of grace. Feeling love in this wide open space. Sunlight fades on the old front lane. Soft winds stir like a sweet refrain. Morning coffee still warm in hand. Dreams unfold just like the land. Take it slow, no need to run. Peace rolls in with the setting sun. Life feels light in moments like these. Hearts unwind in a back porch breeze. Bare footsteps on wooden floors. Open skies and open doors. A quiet laugh in the still of day. Troubles drift and fade away. Take it slow, no need to run. Peace rolls in with the setting sun. Life feels light in moments like these. Hearts unwind in a back porch breeze. So come sit down, stay for a while. Let the stars make your spirit smile. We'll hum a tune that the crickets sing. In the hush of the evening spring. Take it slow, no need to run. Peace rolls in with the setting sun. Life feels light in moments like these. Packed up the pain in a beat up bag. Left that town with a tear stained rag. Took the road where the wild winds play. Followed the sound of the river sway. Old boots walking through morning dew. Sky so wide and a heart brand new. No need to rush or to beg it to stay. The river don't speak but it shows the way. Let it flow, let it roll. Let the current touch your soul. There's a peace in every stone. You ain't lost, you're just alone. When the world forgets to say. You're alright, the river knows the way. Campfire crackles under stars so still. Dreams feel small but they climb the hill. Hope grows quiet but strong each day. Like water carving rock away. Don't need answers, don't need signs. Just some sky and a little time. When the heart's been bruised and led astray. Let the river guide your way. Let it flow, let it roll. Let the current make you whole. There's a path beyond the grave. Where your soul can gently sway. You ain't broken, come what may. You ain't broken, come what may. You're alive, the river knows the way. Morning steam rising from my cup. Bare footsteps on the porch wood rough. Sunlight creeps through the old screen door. New day's here, don't need nothing more. No fast lanes, no wide noise hum. Just the sound of where I'm from. Sunshine on the front porch rail. Hope's blowing in on a cotton breeze tail. A slow song from a red bird's call telling me I got it all. Don't need gold or a downtown crown. I got peace on this patch of ground. Sunshine on the front porch rail. Hands in dirt and a sky so wide. Clouds roll by like dreams in stride. Old dog sleeps in the noonday shade. He knows life's better this way. Simple joys and steady hands. Growing roots where my soul can stand. Sunshine on the front porch rail. Hope's blowing in on a cotton breeze tail. A slow song from a red bird's call telling me I got it all. Don't need gold or a downtown crown. I got peace on this patch of ground. Sunshine on the front porch rail. Some folks run for a higher view. But I found heaven in this worn out pew. Sunshine on the front porch rail. Dreams wrapped tight in a gingham veil. Life don't rush when you take it slow. Love comes easy when you let it grow. Don't need much to rise and shine. Just this porch and a little time. Sunshine on the front porch rail.